Good evening. The date is April 28, 2025, and the time is 6:15. I'm here by call to order the workshop of the City Council of the City of Grover and Florida. Jenny, would you please take the role?
Mayor Keith Keighley.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Barbara Gaines.
Here.
Councilmember Ina J. Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Judith Frank.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Radzick.
Here.
City Manager Mark Khan.
Here.
City Attorney Anita Drossi-Carver.
Here.
Sergeant at Arms Chief Sean Ramsey.
Here.
City Clerk for Jimmy White.
Here.
Okay, we have a call. Parks and Community Services Department, would you like to take it over?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. We're going to start with the budget portion of the presentation for Parks and the Cemetery. So on the first slide here, you'll notice that for the Parks budget, we have an FY 2023 total of $5,852,940. For 2324 total activity, you had a $7,905,139. For the current year, for FY 24, we have budgeted $21,882,200. Year-to-date activity through March of this year, we have a total of $1,145,69. Of that Personnel Services is $389,419. And Operating Expenses is $267,958. And Capital being $972,292. And then Grants and AIDS, which is with the Lake County Library for Marion Basinger, at $16,000. The proposed budget for FY 2526, I'm sorry, before I go there, let me just say that you'll notice in FY 22, 23, FY 23, you had 10.5 personnel in Parks, and 24, you had 10.5. For FY 25, Council approved an increase of 1, since we took on the cemeteries, that increased the 1. So, and then we're proposing the same thing to stay at FY 2026. For FY 2026, you're looking at approximately a 12.2 K increase in Personnel Services that reflects the baseline cost with no changes in staffing, no increase to workers' comp, and a 10% estimated increase in benefits, so that being medical, dental, those type of things. For your operating expenses, you are looking at a request of $985,400. Of that, that is a 24.3 K increase in operating expenses that are attributed to items such as janitorial services, contract services, water and sewer bed, and landscape maintenance. For capital outlay, you are actually looking at a decrease of $6.4 million, and that is forces due to a lot of good portion of the projects for this year, such as Cherry Lake Park, South Lake Regional, Ronald Gaffney, Ronald Septon Gaffney, the portions of those being completed in the FY 2025 budget. You will note that there is a proposed that we will go do a loan for the South Lake Regional Park, but that's also being paid back by Lake County Funds. But there is still a cost of issuance, which is the deduction of 100, or the reduction of 162.5 K between '25 and '26 in debt services. For the proposed...
Can you turn that slide a little bit?
I'm sorry? Go back.
Go back to that slide.
Yes. Why can't I go back to that slide? Here. Nope, you had... Sorry, I had it. There we go. We got it. Yes, sir. Sorry.
Okay.
So for FY 26, the proposed capital improvements are as follows. There is Parks Maintenance Equipment for $15,000, which is, I believe, a lawn mower and a trailer for $15,000. There is also a master plan being requested for Jimmy Thomas Memorial Park to the tune of $75,000. There is David Blank's Park Construction Dock Surveying Geotech for Park Improvements, plus Roadway Parking for $250,000. This is the carryforward, so there is an addition to the Ronald Septon Gaffney, so we're estimating approximately $750,000 that will roll forward to FY 26 from funds from this year. There is also park signage per the city's design standards for $20,000, and then Phase 2 Event Lawn Basketball and Fitness Court for $350,000. You then have Cherry Lake Park, again, carryforward from FY 25, is $500,000. Park signage, again, for the $20,000 per the city design standards. A fitness court shade structure for $75,000. A Phase 4 Design Permitting and Construction Docks for Cherry Lake for $250,000. And last, but certainly not least, is South Lake Regional Park. They are estimating $11 million in carryforward from FY 25. Park signage, once again, for South Lake Regional, and then Phase 2 and 3 Programming Design and Community Input Meetings for $75,000.
So can I ask you a question, please? Do you know what slide this is, or do you want me to give you my questions now?
Let me hold until...
Sorry, this is Slide 2. There is not a number on this. I do apologize. I think...
Okay.
No...
Slide 3.
Okay.
I'll have Slide 3 if you count the cover. Yes, sir.
So someplace later on in this presentation, do I know, for instance, where my fitness court shade structure and what source of funds that's going to be, or the permitting for Phase 4, is there someplace later on in here that's going to tell me that?
So there is not. Right now, one of the things that would be eligible for that could be discretionary. So one of the things that we're doing right now is we're getting these requests out in front of the Council for FY 26 to see what the Council wants to take forward. And then at that point, when we start estimating what we will receive in revenues, we'll start making the determination, you know, that we would use Park Impact Fees that might be available. I know Mr. Walker and I were talking about the fitness court shade structure. There was potential to go to Live Well, because they did a grant to us for the fitness court itself. But potentially, there was, you know, an opportunity to go back to them for a grant for that as well. So it's kind of a moving target right now until we set out those revenues and see what exactly Council wants to take forward. But discretionary, you know, off the top of my head, Park Impact Fees discretionary, and then we could obviously look at any of the grant opportunities with other partners.
I like the way that you left "add the lawn" out of it, so it'd be great if you left "add the lawn" out of it.
No problem.
Can I ask a quick question about that shade structure? Same questions here. Is it going to be more like the shades, like we have over there, where the kids' equipment is, or is it going to be more of a hard ceiling structure?
It would be more the fabric materials, such as the playground at Cherry Lake Park.
Like the shades. Okay. Yeah, I was just curious. All right. Thank you so much.
Please.
We'll go ahead and move forward. So this is the Oak Tree Union Colored Cemetery of Taylorville, and this is the budget. So you'll notice that there are no prior year numbers. That is something that was brand new to the budget for FY 2025. So for FY 2025, there is no personnel that is budgeted in this fund, unlike the Greenwood Cemetery that you will see in a moment. But we have a total of operating expenses of $50,000 for FY 25. So far, we've spent $5,211,000. And the proposed budget for FY 26 is $32,500. So you're looking at a 17.5 decrease in operating expenses is attributed to the landscape maintenance and operating supplies. So being a new fund this year, new things that we're doing, the city is taking on. We didn't really know what to expect with that. So we've kind of, Mr. Walker sharpened his pencil and did a great job on reducing that for next year. The next one is Greenwood Cemetery. You will notice that with Greenwood Cemetery, we do that one personnel that we added in FY 25 is budgeted partly through the Greenwood Cemetery Fund and partly through the Parks Fund itself. So for this year, we have a budget of $29,000 for personnel. Of that, we've spent $4,725,000. Next year, we're estimating $33,135,000. That is a 4K increase. Again, that's no change in numbers. That's no change in allocation. It's just a 10% estimate for benefits. On the operating expenses, we have budgeted for this year $55,300, with $6,525 of that being budgeted, or spent already in this year. Next year, we're asking, he's asking for $39,800. Again, a reduction. New fund, new projects that we're taking on, not knowing how much it was going to cost. And we've gotten a little bit of a better idea on what those costs are going to be for next year. So you see the decrease of 15.5 K. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Walker.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of Council, before we leave that slide, it might be advantageous to explain special revenue funds. So the Greenwood Cemetery budget is a special revenue fund. So not a full enterprise fund, like a self-contained business, but a special revenue fund where the revenues received from individuals wishing to purchase plots as well as transfer from the church to the city will go into a separate fund, and it'll be self-contained.
Mr. Hunter, is somewhere, I was looking through the budget, is somewhere the revenue projections for that cemetery? I saw so many that are being dug right now and all that, but what is the revenue side of that? It should balance out, right, in some way, shape, or form?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of Council, it's not a complete balance year over year. There was a pretty intricate study that was done, which showed the lifestyle, the life cycle of the funds that are going to be transferred, coupled with interest. The revenue right now is not shown, because you haven't adopted the policies yet. In the next couple of months, I believe, Mr. Walker will be coming forward. He's been working with the city attorney on crafting policies, as well as price points, resident, non-resident, crematorium, you know, so that has to come back before the mayor and council.
Thanks. So it is safe to assume that the revenue is going to be at least $84,300, which is the operating and the personnel expenses?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of Council, Councilman Radzik, as I suggested, and apologize for not being clear, you're not going to break even every year over time until you set your pricing policies, gauge the demand. My expectation is that you will not get $84,000 in revenue next fiscal year.
I'm sure it'll come back around, but I, you know, I just have had a hard time multiplying that out when we've only used so much funds for five months. How it comes out to be the budget next year significantly more than if I doubled that. I mean, you're almost 100% higher on the ask than what our current spend is, so... It wouldn't be 79, but I think it's more realistic to say it's 36, you know?
What are the operating expenses based on? What's in that number?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, another distinction between the two cemetery funds, and not necessarily funds, but the Oakwood Cemetery and some of that cost savings is a result, as I understand it, from we use a contractor to provide some of the maintenance services there. And they're a strong community partner, who I believe is discounting the fees. This is, I think it's been three months now that we've been operating the cemetery, and there were a great many unknowns. And we're doing it in-house, mostly with Mr. Walker and Tommy.
So the operating expenses is...
Excuse me, but most of the operating expenses is the outsourcing for the maintenance.
Okay.
But I'll go back to mine, because, you know, I'm pretty slow with this stuff. But if it was three months, that's a fourth of a year, and you multiply what we're spending, we're still substantially off, right? But what they ask, what they ask is if we have three months of proven expense, multiply that times four, it doesn't come out to 40 grand.
The current expense that you have also is we were not paying for the contract maintenance until two weeks ago, nor did we have, we had a vacant position for the first three months of the calendar year. So we did not hire the cemetery, the 50% cemetery staff person until around January.
Is the cost of actually, I'm not sure at the right word to put it, but preparing the grave for burial, is that in that operating cost as well?
It's in it with current staff. So you have, you have staff currently working for your Parks Department that has experience in cemetery operations, one being Tommy Watkins and one being myself.
So a lot of our budget is really, or the operations part, would be how many burials we actually had in the course of a year. So we may have 40,000 as a budget. It's a number you're kind of sort of throwing out there, because we don't really know where we're at. But that number could be higher, because there's been more burials, or it could be lower?
Yes, and you're also going to have sales, you know, for future needs. So that's going to be staff time to spend time with family, visit the cemetery, identify a location, and it might not be needed for 10, 15, 20 years.
Okay, thank you.
Here's an outline, Mayor, Councilmembers, of what we'll be discussing here in the next several slides. Some of the initial slides that were mentioned by Finance in April. We will also touch on, going through the individual slides moving forward. This is captioned pretty much in the biweekly, top of the biweekly. I think it's important just to note and touch on. Your personnel with the Parks and Community Services Department is budgeted with 11 full-time employees and one part-time employee. We are currently staffed at 10 full-time and one part-time. We recently had a, why would you say somebody moving on, which was actually the shared cemetery Parks person. He was here for the three months, a former NFL football player. And, you know, best wishes to him. He signed with the Canadian Football League. He's still of age to be able to perform at that level, so we wish him the best, and we are advertising for the position. Your Parks Division, breaking down the whole department into the Parks Department, you've got seven budgeted full-time employees, currently at six, the individual I mentioned. And, you know, that encompasses, you know, taking care of your parks. You've got 57 acres of open space parks. The parks are listed, and we all know the parks that the city has. And, you know, also maintaining the South Lake Regional Park areas that have been sodded and improved on over the last couple of years, which is 10 acres of retention areas and the right-of-way of Max Hux Road in front of the park. Also, we maintain some of the city buildings. We shared some with the Facilities Department, but mostly your Park staff, those six men and women are maintaining the city hall, the Purier Building property, Cherry Lake Fire Station 94, the Park Office, the old fire department complex on 50, and we take care of the landscaping of those areas. We also clean daily 14 public restrooms. I think everybody here knows how challenging it is to take care of our own restrooms in our home. Imagine seven days a week dealing, you know, with the new, the public restrooms, and we're adding a new one or two every year. And like April mentioned earlier, staffing levels have remained the same. So kudos to the team, you know, for, you know, digging in and getting the job done. Another big challenge and task that the department handles is the managing of the building rentals here at the Purier Building and the Lake David Center. I've been here six years, and I think my first year or two, I've said I've never seen buildings rented as frequently as these two buildings. Every Saturday and Sunday, these buildings have a rental from your residents, whether it's birthday parties, weddings, celebrations of all kinds. And it's work, you know? I mean, it's Saturday and Sunday. Saturday and Sundays, we currently have one Park staff working. And the task and responsibilities that I had, you know, previously mentioned, that they do on a daily basis, they also have to incorporate coming in here and making sure the rental building is cleaned from the last renter and, you know, taken care of. This past Saturday, we got a phone call. The air conditioning wasn't working in the Purier Building. Staff reached out to Facilities, and Facilities was able to get somebody, an air conditioning company, here. So it is a huge challenge with the building rentals. Not a complaint on our end, just letting you know. The administrative assistant, Maritza, she's also here, just enjoying the presentation. But she was, I, I've almost, she's not allowed to go to long meetings or out to lunch and stuff, because that phone rings nonstop when she's gone. And now with our new phone system, how we roll it over, good job IT, we're not missing phone calls, because in a 30-minute lunch break, or whatever she takes, six, seven calls on building rentals. And we got to think, it's just not within the month. I mean, it's six months out. People are preparing for their events, and they love these buildings because of the history, so... A lot of work there. Your Community Services Division, your Event Planning Program Division, you have two budgeted and filled full-time positions and one part-timer. They do the event planning and implementation for the 30-some events that we have annually. Your Recreation Program, planning and implementation, ever since the partnership on the gymnasium, at the Nathaniel Community Gymnasium. You know, we started off with youth basketball. Yay! I think we're in year season four, five now, and grown up to 145 children participating in that program. You have adult basketball leagues, operate two, three nights a week, and we're up to 14 teams with adult basketball. Started a co-ed volleyball league this season, had 14, so, you know, the programs are starting. That was the purpose of the partnership. Yes, there's a lease attached to it, but we don't have to purchase the land, build the building, and wait for that time to come. We are now, you've now allowed us to provide programming to our community from children to adults, so yay, yay, City Council, thank you. Special event permit application for non-city hosted events, just like building rentals. I think many of you participate in the partnership events, such as the October 5K Run, the Reggae Festival, the Chinese New Year, and many others that people want to, individuals, groups want to use our facilities, which we want to do more of, and we'll talk about that future. Some of the events that we're currently doing, maybe we can partner with others, not that we haven't been trying. But the special event permit application process is lengthy. Ms. Francesca and Maritza handle those. Where we've got to, you know, get that application, we've got to understand what they want to do on our property, make sure they have a proper license and everything in place. That then has to go through your other city departments, police, fire, community development, planning, zoning, in case there's tents, fire inspections for food vendors. So there's a lot of hands that've got to touch it, and we've got to get that application in front of us in time. So not only are we doing all events, staff is also managing other events. Yay to us, but a lot of work. Some of those saying breakdown, don't know why this is here, should be gone. My fault. Sorry. Work chart, basically, everything that's been mentioned is now boxed out for you. Your left side is your special event coordinators and your part-timer. Boxes in pink, possibly be requesting, and we'll talk through as we go through future slides and through upcoming months, part-time recreation folks may be needed with the South Lake Regional Park programming that might be required by city staff there. Lake Regional Park programming that might be required by city staff there, also just to go along with the programs that are growing and being built. You know, we'll show the breakdown of Hope International, or I'm sorry, the Nathaniel Community Gymnasium hour breakdown, as far as the hours that have been growing, and we have one part-timer that's, you know, working those hours, so there could be a need for a part-time position, but that'll be discussed moving forward. Current park assessments, so these are things that we think about when, you know, Ms. April and Finance mentioned, you know, reprogramming or master plan for Jimmy Thomas Park, a master plan for Phase Two of South Lake Regional Park. What are the elements, what are the things that we're looking for when we're doing that? You know, park signage, you know, we've adopted through your Planning Department, your Community Development Department, your CRA, you know, wayfinding signs and what signage is going to look and be all uniformed in the same family. So I believe that Council has adopted the signage family, and the park picture that you can see up there is a sign, so we're starting to build these new parks, well, the sign needs to go up along with that. So that's some of the capital improvement, around twenty thousand dollars that, for the three parks, Cherry Lake, South Lake Regional, and Gaffney Park that April mentioned. In your master plan, it talked about, you know, just being mindful and thinking ahead of land acquisitions around Jimmy Thomas Memorial Park, which, you know, is your ballfield park at the top of the hill. You know, there's no parking, it's been there for eighty-five years, it's a middle of one block, one square block, and it has no parking, and, you know, the baseball league's been operating there for eighty-five years. South Lake Regional Park, though, should relieve that pressure. So those are some of the things we look at moving forward. Uniformity in your parks when you remaster plan a park, you know, benches, trash receptacles, let's improve how they look, you know, they're all different, so as we go step by step through each park, we want to, you know, make them uniform. Adding kiosk, informational kiosks, we all say, how do we get the word out? You know, we don't have any informational boards at our parks, so that's a way to help there. As we're going through reprogramming and repurposing, you know, definitely making sure our parks are ADA compliant, and then you also adopted the City Ducks Guide Code, and I think we have a deadline or said by 2027 that we would upgrade the lighting in our parks. So as we're touching them and repurposing, reprogramming, master planning them, we will be identifying those needs as well. So those are our short-term needs, our long-range vision, all this is from our master plan. I think each of you have a book, and I'm sure you've read it through, but your priorities that our residents identified through surveys, and those surveys are in the back of your master plan book, if you want to go back and take a peek at them. So top to bottom just gives a, you know, priority list of what the residents reached out to us and said they wanted, programming at the bottom center of the page, farmers' market, concerts and parks, senior programs, future events, and then other priorities to the right, which we've been discussing here, a little bit improving our existing parks, neighborhood parks, we'll talk about in a little bit, and down the list. Once again, the next seven slides will be out of your master plan book, and you've been presented these before, it's been presented to the Strategic Planning Committee. You know, your existing parks are more hubbed around the downtown area. State Road Fifty corridor is where most of your parks are, other than Ronald Seaton Gaffney Park, off of Memorial Way, and Cherry Lake Park. So including South Lake Regional Park, Tana Park Acres, not built out, is around eight under two hundred acres. And existing indoor recreation space because of the partnership with the Nathaniel Community Gymnasium, you're a little over twelve thousand square feet. As we continue to, as the, we all continue to build the city and make improvements. Parks Department was small and lacking, and we, you know, with the growth of the residents, your Community Development Department and planning, when new development comes in, they're working with developers and such to identify new local parks to be throughout the city limits. And your local parks, parks of five acres or under, and the goal is to have close to fifty of the local parks, not all owned and maintained by the city. The goal would be to have your developments, your HOAs, you know, build those parks, run guidelines and specs that approved by the city, which your Planning Department and your Park Department are working together on getting in your code. So, you know, fifty new parks, a long-range vision, so I don't think it's going to happen tomorrow, but it is being looked at and thought of. As for new community parks, added on to that is, you know, you want to have some larger community parks, twenty-five acres to fifty acres. Once again, Community Development is working in hand-in-hand with your Parks Department and the developers, and the Community Development Department's taking the lead on it as far as identifying these future community parks, Mercer and the north area of the city, you can see the radius and the starburst identifying, you know, where those community parks could be. Now, it's not pinpointed on a certain parcel, just in a region.
Mr. Walker, now's a good time for me to ask this question. We've been through increases in current parks with South and up Cherry Lake and these new parks. How far behind are we on concurrency with regards to acreage? How many acreages do we not have to satisfy our comp plan?
If I can have you hold on that question, because that is on a slide coming up.
Okay.
Thank you. No, sir. I said, yes, it was a question, sorry. So that's the long-range vision on community parks. New indoor recreation centers, we have the partnership with the Nathaniel Community Gymnasium, which is identified low, seven portion of the city. But the goal would be to have two additional centers as the city grows, on a Cherry Lake possibly, and one more of the city area, which where a large community park was being identified as well. Platte Caja Greenway, your Community Development, City Department, working with, through City Council, identifying lands and ways to secure some pathways along the Platte Caja to, you know, meet a natural, city of natural charm, so that is being worked on. Same with conservation lands, city with natural charm, looking to conserve the lands, and Community Development is taking the lead on that. Trails, you know, your Parks Master Plan has adopted the trail system that was in place by Lake County, because you want to have that partnership and connectivity, and TJ Fish and your Public Works Department is the better department at this time to manage that connectivity with new roads and roadways coming through the city, so continue to build trails to connect with, you know, the Coast to Coast Trail that'll be coming through the city here in the next couple of years. And those are long-range recreation trails, vision with everything compiled as far as acreage, recreation space, conservation greenways, so the map on there is a vision of what the city will look like when complete. And I could read that in my office, but I can't read it here. This is a page from the master plan that was giving us a, okay, was giving us a, not step by step, but identifying the needs and direction as far as an implementation of getting to where we want to be. This was adopted in 2021, the master plan was by City Council. So it identifies, you know, South Lake Regional Park getting Phase One built, yay, we're in that process. It identifies the second box, identifying parks of needs, improvements on existing parks, and we are going through that step by step. You've redesigned Gaffney Park, your dog park, which we've started construction this year. You've worked on David Blanks Park over by the old Tomlin Center, Gadsen and Blue Street, so that conceptual plan was adopted by City Council, and part of the request for next year's budget is to create construction documents for that to maybe be able to be able to build in 2027. So we're following the steps that have been identified in the master plan, it is a good guide for us, so we're going to continue that process and, you know, work with City Council in completing the task. Cherry Lake Park Phase Three, we just completed Phase Two, everyone was out there for the October 31th Trump Retreat celebration, what a great event, and every day since then, the park has been well-used. Easter egg hunt was a disaster, too many humans, joke. There's a great turnout, probably two thousand-plus families and children, we just need to have an adult line next time, a holding area for adults. But Phase Three, we are looking to... Current budget is the one point five three eight million that we discussed, that the rebudgeting dollar amount would be five hundred thousand off of that, because we expect to have some movement in this year's budget year, which would include tennis, pickleball, basketball courts. The tennis, pickleball courts are on the bottom right, you can see them shadowed in. The new tennis court would be right next to the existing tennis court, large program pavilion, which should, construction should start within the next two, three weeks, it's in the final steps of permitting, construction permitting, and additional trail lights to go around the event lawn and the playground area. Last year, we, during Phase Two, we put the underground conduit for the wiring for the lights, so we are finalizing the construction documents to get into permitting, and we expect to have some of that completed in this year. As I mentioned, five hundred thousand is being requested as a rebudget for next year. Ronald Seaton Gaffney Park, as identified in the master plan, is a park that City Council should consider as far as repurposing or remaster planning, which we did complete, which is in front of you. So that is a complete master plan of Ronald Seaton Gaffney Park off of Memorial Way. You can see on-street parking at the bottom of the picture, which would help with traffic coming on Memorial Way, working with your Public Works Department with that component. But Phase Two, which is this current year, which you have, we will have a rebudget of seven hundred and fifty thousand carry fold out of the one point five million in this year's budget. The bottom right in color is what I focus on in this year, will be a new playground, stroll matter area, going to redesign the Ronald Seaton Gaffney Memorial Monument earlier there, improve that, and we will be, we're asking for a little move on the funding for next year's budget of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to include the basketball court, the event lawn area, and the fitness court that is grayed out right above the bottom right grass lawn over there, you see a gray area, that's the fitness court. During, during construction document design now, we're at thirty percent, and when TJ, your Public Works Director and I started talking about the on-street parking, which falls under him to assist with, the event lawn area, the basketball court, and the fitness court was not in the construction documents for this year, we were going to do, work on that next year. We are at a perfect point now to do a change order, bad words, understand, but it's a perfect place now at thirty percent to incorporate the construction documents for that basketball court, the event lawn, and the fitness court now, so as we start building this, the end of this fiscal year, it would be a seamless transition to get the event lawn basketball court done. Instead of completing a beautiful playground, some pavilions, enhanced memorial area, have kids start playing and say, oh, timeout, we're under construction again. So let's seamlessly get into that, let's fix that, you know, complete that colored diagram area, and then if the Streets Department has to come in at a later time and do the street parking, that's fine, we don't have to disrupt everything that we just built for a pause and keep the kids out of another construction area. So that's the request for the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. April did mention, you know, maybe his Parks Department, working with Brenda, your project manager, can work through Livwell or other grant opportunities, because Livwell did fund the fitness court at Cherry Lake Park, and they are very excited about that, so we are reaching out to them. Brenda's been working on that, seeing when their grants application process is, and should work seamlessly with next year's budget and timeline for constructing this, also is including the shade structure through Livwell, hopefully the requests will go in for Cherry Lake Park. David Blanks Park, as previously mentioned, conceptual plan through community meetings and adoption by City Council is complete, so you have a request in the budget, which April identified, for David Blanks Park for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to get the construction documents completed, geotech for the park, and identifying roadway improvements. So basically getting everything ready on the shelf to, when funding is ready in the future, 2027, 2028, making a move to get this park built in that community, which we need to have some movement happening anyways, because we have a community center that is now empty, not being used. So that was the purpose of this design, where the basketball courts are on the top of the park screen, that's currently where your rec, old rec, former rec center of the Lee Tomlin Center is. We'd like to repurpose the building somewhere, not really sure yet where, maybe a park for a maintenance location, because right now we're all hubbed out of State Road Fifty, and everybody loads up and goes out of there, so maybe a South Lake Regional Park fenced-in area compound for Park staff to have a hub there, or even South Lake Regional Park and, you know, staff disperses out of a couple areas instead of driving, you know, up north all the time. So in the budget, money's to do construction documents for David Blanks Park. South Lake Regional Park, the lime green box identifies the county funding that is being received for this park. Council, Mayor and Council are aware of the partnership we have with them, the funding is provided by Lake County. That box identifies the funding amount that's been received to date, seven point four five million through fiscal year, this year. And then your additional county funding, which was worked on with the city manager and the county attorney, sorry, county administrator, adopted by both city and county elected officials, boards, to have another thirteen point five five million dollars added to that in the next seven years for a total of twenty point five million dollars to construct Phase One of the park. All the bullets below in blue identify what will be in that construction. The picture identifies the four baseball fields, four softball, two multipurpose fields for youth and adult soccer, which will also encompass a cricket facility in the middle of those two, utilizing those two athletic fields. Fishing Pier, sand volleyball court is also in scope, and your bid for this project for Phase One B is on the streets now, and then out last Thursday, the 24th. It'll be out for thirty days. The fishing pier and the sand volleyball court are an additional addendum item, meaning, hey, let's get it crossed for, not sure if it's something we will do at this time, but we'll get a hard number to identify the need and communicate with the county if there's any changes. I really can't see this one, could in my office, but I will, I think I could talk through it. What you have in front of you here is a breakdown of the programming for South Lake Regional Park for the fields that are being built. So your first column is youth baseball, which will, you know, be able to accommodate children ages five to twelve. Basically, the whole facility is children aged five to twelve, other than maybe the athletic fields, the football soccer fields could be for adult programming. Those fields easily, with four fields for each sport, can accommodate two hundred children, and that's a low number. I mean, your current facility at Jimmy Thomas Memorial Park... I mean, your current facility at Jimmy Thomas Memorial Park with three fields and one field per age group at times in the past has accommodated close to 300 children. So this complex, those individual sports, will be able to handle 350, 500 children per season. With that being said, you've got pros and cons with that, and this is coming, you know, from experience, from your park director and your, and your staff, managing programs like this. Most programs, a lot of programs work with nonprofits, you know, third parties. You have, you have your youth leagues, you have your YMCA's, you have other entities that do this. You have your volunteer organizations, you know, more or less that run these programs. When we, if we were, you know, do we run it in-house? Do we do better? Do we outsource it in status quo, how the world works now? Maybe, I don't know. I think at times we've all read, you know, on social media, read in magazines, you know, see on the newspapers, you know, coach has a bad day. Bad things happen. Can that happen in-house as well? Yes, but you have your hands on it. Is the recreation sport world really changing these days? Does every, and this is not, this is not a dig at any, any parent that has a child in youth league sports. Does every, every parent or grandparent think that their child is the next superstar? Absolutely. Got to, got to, got to think positive, right? Whether it's on a court or if it's in water. So the challenge with our society these days is something called travel ball. Travel ball has come around, and travel ball is that, is that mechanism that allows parents and coaches to pick the best of the best and go, go take the best out of your community and load up every weekend and go to a alternate site or a site in your own town, which this one could accommodate without a doubt, and you bring the best of the best to your town, and you play five, six, seven, eight, 10 games a weekend, and you go home. Yay! But what does that do? It's the best of the best. It's the 20% of superstars in your community, on your baseball fields, on your softball fields, on your soccer fields, you know, on all your fields. And I think it tears your community apart. It tears the heart out of the community, because now you've got kids that want to be, want to have fun, want to chase butterflies, you know, want to just have fun, meet, meet friends, and interact with other people and not be isolated. So that, that is where I think your parks department, your governments, and whether it's us or whether it's not, I just think in general, the government, local government needs to do better when it comes to youth recreational sports and managing the programs. Does it come with a dollar? Is all this in the, in these, in these line items? Yes. Does it come with a cost? Absolutely. Is it probably not manageable because of the dollars? Absolutely. But I just want to put the seed in your head that maybe there's a way we can do some of it, if not all of it, but I don't think it needs to be none of it. And I just, you know, this was presented to your recreation advisory committee, and your recreation advisory committee, as a recommendation of city council, said, let your parks department run the programs. They understood the dollar, you know, hit. But until, until we feel comfortable, until we find that organization or partner that we can, you know, go to dinner with, you know, maybe we keep in-house until that. And since that RAC meeting, since this slide was put together, some of those conversations have already taken place with your Groveland Baseball League. The mayor had reached out to the Groveland Baseball League or was reached out by the Groveland Baseball League, because there's a change in handing, handing the torch, which is one of the challenges when you partner with nonprofits. They're volunteers, they're mom and dads, that are giving their time back to their community and taking that rain and running that league as long as they can, but then their child, their grandson, granddaughter ages out, and they got to hand it to somebody else. Groveland Baseball League survived for 85 years. It's not going to stop. It doesn't need to stop, and I'm not saying that. I manage the one, you know, in Hernando County, been doing it for 12, 14 years and been involved for 26 years. It's what you do in your community when you have a passion, whether it's athletics, arts and crafts, farmers markets, that's what builds a true community. But the Groveland Baseball League this past year, and I'm only sharing this because it was, it was put on record at the RAC meeting, when you had a parent that was a part of the Groveland Baseball League that mentioned, hey, my child isn't playing in your league anymore, in the league anymore, because the number of children has been capped, managed because of that travel ball world, that word. The, the league management, not a negative thing against the current league management either. It's a league decision, it's their program, they're using our facilities, we provide the facilities, have fun. However, they're only having 22 teams in every age group, 24 kids per age group, which is four age groups, and I don't even think they're at 24 in all age groups, do the math. You're at 96 kids or less. I've already said that this, this league was at 250, 300 kids, because what they did was, they had an evaluation, said, hey, come, come evaluate, bring your child to our baseball league, try out, we will rate you. And then how you rate, if you're one of the top 24, you can then pay and sign up. The others, I'm sorry, maybe next year. That's not what we need to be about, because now that 80% of those children that are less talented, what are they doing? They're either staying home, because now they're disciplined, they might be ruined mentally, or they're going to Mineola, they're going to Claremont, they're going to Leesburg, they're going somewhere else. So the other parks department that manage your, manage the recreation program, one of them is Leesburg, and they do it across the board. And Leesburg's not going to be the only oddity, there are, there are many. But I just thought it was important to take some time on this slide. It is a passion of mine, so I'm being selfish, but I think it's important to the community that we, we put our thinking caps on whenever we open up those fields for business. Who, who, who's managing our programs and our children to make sure we're focusing on everybody and we're giving a true youth recreation program for the kids to have fun, to learn? And when they get to a certain age, yeah, then it, then it's about turning that volume up, it's competitive time, time to win, but it's not when you're five, six years old, seven, eight years old, and you're traveling to state tournaments, to the World Series, and staying at hotels. No. So I'll get off my soapbox. I apologize, but thank you for listening. Your event programs, you have your 2024 calendar on the top right, reason being, it covers October, November, and December of this fiscal year, and then your 2025 event calendar. Up top, the very first, the five bullets is identifying your current budget, which I believe matches your budget description in your fiscal year 2025, '26 budget. So let's, let's go through those. I think it's important that we identify, you know, it's this budget, this budget description has always been transparent in your budget for each of, each of the council members and for residents. Your second Friday block party events and monthly holiday events, we budget $50,000. That's an average of $5,000 per month, because we do take July and August off of the farmer's market. So 10 months, we're doing a second Friday. In those months, we have Martin Luther King Day, we have Veterans Day, we have Memorial Day, we have Juneteenth. So we, we package it in, that $5,000 to make it work. Also, going to Founder's Day, we, we request a $30,000 budget, July 4th, a $40,000 budget, back-to-school backpack, back event, where we give 6, 700 backpacks away with school supplies free to children in your community. That, that, that number has dropped down, it did last year, with the plus of the city manager makes some cuts, and we found a partner, it used to be at 10,000, we found a partner to be, get with us, so we're able to still fulfill our obligation, and the partner puts in at least 5,000. Your holiday events, and I should have put December, but I didn't, sorry, that, that's a holiday event, to also go along with your tree lighting, which falls on your second Friday, and your Christmas parade. Going into the post-event reports, the breakdowns of what does it cost us to operate and what are, what are true numbers, and this is also included in your bi-weekly reports. The block party in October was canceled, however, your trunk-or-tree event at Cherry Lake Park, you know, you see the number there. So you got a break, you know, so we stayed within budget there. Yay! November, you see, Dia de los Muertos is another cultural event that we host. So you see the block party combined, we're a little over budget there. December, Love and Love and the 2,700 with the parade, like I mentioned, a holiday event, 10,000 and a 5,000 for second Friday, within budget, within the $15,000 budget, little extra to spread the love where we, where we went over a little bit, and you continue on. Your Founder's Day event at the bottom, you can see what last month's event cost, 39,000, because we added the Swiss Tap for a rally event and such, that was a little more than one. However, creativity from your event staff and your communication department, working with Visit Lake, we were able to get $8,000 grant from them, so yay, thank you, Visit Lake. Important to note that on the right side of the screen, next to the event, is your, is your athletic programs that I mentioned have begun at the Thane York Community Gymnasium. Now, more so than your, your events, your athletic programs is a way with your expenses and revenues to almost be a breakeven, if not in favor of the city a little bit. So when I mentioned Southlake Regional Park and taking on, you know, maybe some athletic programs, that is an area where revenues can be made because of those registration fees and whatnot. So you can see your fall seasons of your youth basketball, adult basketball, they're valid, all those numbers have fallen, and not too bad, yay! So good job to the athletic and event staff there. Here's a breakdown of the Thane York Community Gymnasium. And I just had it paused, because I'm going back to Mr. Radzick, and I promised him that slide would be here, and I, we might have to go back to slide three like you wanted, because I, that was going to be a slide I was going to create, but didn't. But I do have the numbers that you want, I apologize, because that little box there is what I was thinking for your, your numbers. The Thane York Community Gymnasium, the lease agreement is on the top, it was a five-year lease that expired, does currently expire in 2027. Your hours of programming, which I think is last year's hours, so excuse me on that. The box to the left on the bottom with your month-to-month breakdown shows the total days and hours of operation utilizing the gymnasium this year. 82 days, 356 hours. Your box to the right is your previous year, with 65 days, 230.5 hours. So you can see the increase of hours and days and activities because of the athletic program growth and participation increase. Participation increase, your hours increase, your days increase, and whatnot. So not a bad thing, but it is demand on the, on the staff with the growth. I apologize for the error on the second line up there. Cemeteries, we've discussed early with, when April went over the cemetery budgets for both Greenwood and Oak Tree Union colored cemetery, Taylor'sville, we own two cemeteries. Just looking at the area, I think of, of Oak Tree Union colored cemetery says a lot. You can see the headstones, you can see, you know, and what does that mean to your, to your parks department? That, that means maintenance, that means obstacles. I don't want to say it that way, but I mean, you know, it's, it's not mowing your yard. You know, you, you've got more details that need to be specialties with weed eating and weed, you know, and the shells, and so it's more beautifying than just mowing a yard or open spaces in parks. So that's the reason we do outsource. Yes, we have budgeted a 50% out of a cemetery fund that comes out of the general fund for park staff or cemetery staff person, but you know, that, that goes in line with the Greenwood Cemetery and the active, being an active cemetery, you know, with burials taking place and marking of grave sites, headstones, and whatnot. So here's a little breakdown of cemetery that you've seen before, other than maybe bullet number four, the annual burials. It's not 100% accurate, we're working off some numbers and some, working with the church on Empire Body Fair, but you can see the burials from '17 to current. I, I think 20, 23 and 25, I think 24 should have been a little higher, just from what we've experienced in '25. Since, since taking over in Jan, January, we've had, we've had 12 internments, and that doesn't include taking families out to identify future needs. That doesn't identify, that doesn't identify the monument companies calling and saying, hey, City of Groveland, Greenwood Cemetery, we have three headstones that have been ordered, these are the families, can you please mark the sites? And so we go through our index cards, yes, index cards, almost like maybe Mr. Radzick had baseball cards back in the day, and you're looking, still do. Still do. So that, that is the challenge, Haretza and staff has. You get a phone call about a site, you know, whether it's for a need or a, or a headstone marking, we have to go index by index card, finding the name to find the, the location. It would be nice to say, hey, you know, so-and-so is in this, this plot, this section, or even when you're selling a plot, I would like to buy a plot, can I be in this area? Well, we, we don't know, because the index cards are by names, not by sections. So you've blessed us with funding this year with a database program that we are in the process of getting everything off of index cards into this database, but it has its own challenges. For instance, you have a block called Cemetery, Block L in your cemetery. The index card from 1923 only says Block L, doesn't say what space. You've got 10 spaces in Block L, you need to go out to Block L, hope there's a headstone. If not, find a headstone. Go to that index card, find that, to see what space they're in, and then do your measurements off of that to know where the person is that you're looking for. So once again, not a complaint, just the challenges we work through. I really believe cemeteries belong in parks because of the maintenance and just the, the passion that your, your parks folks have. So it is, it's work in progress. And now I'm going to have to eat crow and go all the way back for Mr. Radzick because of my error. I think you were here? Or did you want to be at Park Space? You wanted to be at Parks. And your question has, Mr. Radzick is, a level of service, how do we, you know, level of service required? Currently, we have parklands in the area of 200 acres, including Southlake Regional Park, 141 acres.
Isn't that 190?
Yes. Because we, yes. So in for parkland, for your passive lands, Southlake Regional Park allows us to meet the level of service with a surplus of 62 acres. Without Southlake Regional Park, we would be, we would be deficient 78 acres. So it's six acres per 100,000 residents, all right? Your park facility, your, your active park areas is three acres of park facilities per 1,000 residents. We are currently deficient 53 acres until we build more.
So can we stop there and go over to the attorney? What does that mean? I know what it means. If we're deficient in the concurrency, how long are we able to? How long are we allowed to be that way till we bring it into, into balance?
So you should be doing concurrency reviews as you approve projects, development projects, and you need to be able to meet the level of service that's provided for in your comprehensive plan as you approve a development?
And that comprehensive plan is voted on by us, right? We do the comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan is set by the council.
But there's a, there's something, if I can just build on yours, what is the population of the comprehensive plan that you're using? Because when we did the comp plan, it was 48,000, then all of a sudden it's jumped to 96, and I went back and reviewed the comp plan, and it's still at 48. So what is your base that you're using for your figure?
Base that I have from our community development department is level of service from 2024.
How many residents? How many residents? Because our comp plan says one thing-
They've done me math at twenty-four thousand residents, and I think the numbers came under twenty-four.
Okay. So, but, but our comp plan says, our comp plan currently says forty-eight, right? So we need to plan for that. If we double, however, that's gonna work, because, um, I keep reading ninety-six thousand everywhere, including in our wastewater management, uh, contract. We just have to have the baseline that we have to understand exactly what our future needs are. Once the land's gone, it's gone. You know, you're not gonna be able to make more land, you have to set it aside now for these developers to, to pitch in for. So that's, that could be, that would double the amount that you would need, right?
Yeah, Mr., Mayor members of the council, you're correct. As, as you heard, Mr. Walker, much of the formula about concurrency is based on acres per thousand. So what he's suggesting is based on the 2024 B-Bur numbers, which community development supplies, there is a deficiency with existing population, and then you extrapolate that out at the three acres per thousand.
Anita, how will the, um, year affect what we're talking about now?
You can review your plan and you can adjust your level of service in the year amendments.
Okay. And we can adjust it based on other jurisdictions or other state metrics or otherwise? And, and what I'm talking about with an year, by the way, is evaluating the actual comp plan, that which we need to do every seven years or something like that.
Yeah. I mean, the council sets what you want your level of service to be.
Okay.
So you can say how much parkland, passive or active, that you want per resident.
Okay. Thank you for that important note.
Can I ask a quick question? So Mike, you showed one slide where it had the circles where communities can put, or developers can with any community coming up, put a park, and there was the circles with all the red dots, whatever the slide that is. This one, yes. So Anita, just use the word passive. Would that count as passive park land that fell into that three acres per thousand residence? Does that get included in that measurement?
It will, depending on how it, how it's built and what's there, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So of all those circles, and I know we talked about this about a while ago, was that the wish list of circles or some, some of those actually already implemented?
It was a master plan, I, you know, putting, focusing on a ten-minute walk, ten-minute bicycle to a park from your community. So that's-
Okay.
That's strategically placed, identify somewhere in that circle, so every family could have a ten-minute.
I knew we'd spoken about this a long time ago, so it just kind of bubbled back up. I appreciate that.
Well, let's go along for discussion, if you have any more.
Oh, sure. Buckle up, folks. We got sent this today, too. My questions are more on this, Mike, just nothing major, just, well, I have plenty on this sheet, too. Let me, let me start with some of the questions I have here. Mike, Mike has asked two questions that were on my list, including the one we just addressed. Um, when you talk about ADA compliance at the park, break that down for me, I know the restrooms have to be ADA compliant. What are the other compliance issues in a park to address ADA needs, slope up onto a sidewalk, and, and what else is, is there that we have to comply with there?
You have, you have others smarter than I that identify that, but as, some of the parks that we've been building now, just enough area, uh, around your park benches, uh, picnic table areas, um, you mentioned the restrooms, all of our playground, playground surfaces, and some of the amenities in the playground are ADA compliant. So just overall, you're full access to your parks.
Okay, thank you. On one slide, again, don't remember because I cut, lost track of slides, talked about an adventure course on one of the slides. Tell me what that adventure course is, please? I think it's back the other way, but-
It's on Cherry Lake Park.
Yeah. Whoop, go back, the one with the red writing. Nope, never mind. But it's on there, it says adventure course somewhere. Tell me about that.
The, the back component of your, the slide in front of you on, on the, the full master plan conceptual design of Cherry Lake Park, uh, there was an adventure course idea to put on that back slope where your current playground is and the drop-off area, to do an adventure course, some more, more challenging elements, climbing up hills, you know, lake rocks and, and slides, and so just a more challenging playground than the normal.
Good, thank you. Um, talked about the program pavilion coming to Cherry Lake Park. Is that going to be similar to what we have down at Lake David? Or is it just more of a flat pavilion, kind of like the pavilion at the front of the park? What exactly is that?
It's gonna be a pretty cool-looking, uh, structure. Um, it's gonna be a three-tier pavilion, so your center poles with rooftop will be higher, and then you'll have two lower tiers with a pitched roof, so you'll have three tiers, uh, pavilion that'll fit, uh, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen eight-foot picnic tables on it. So a very large structure, one that the community can enjoy, or if there's a program that needs to be done, you know, Wacky Wednesday, animal show and tell, arts and craft things, so, very nice.
Would that, so we had the concert in the park a couple weeks ago, and they brought in their own staging and so on. Would that negate them have, would, could that be used kind of like the stage at Lake David Park as well, or would it negate for them having to bring that in? How would that power?
It could. Uh, you know, it wouldn't be a raised, uh, flooring, um, but yes, the picnic tables could be repurposed out in the event lawn area, and the band could be under there, but yes, it's close enough to the, the power source that it could work.
Okay. I've got a couple questions on this.
Why don't you go ahead, and you, are you gonna re-present that, or your backup info? That came out? Because we all have questions on that, so either of us will start.
Yay. Um, so on the front, the first page, um, midway down, talking about background checks for youth sport volunteers. Now, I know that the, um, EYP is gonna be taking over a lot of that, taking the weight off the back of our, uh, team here. So you've got the twenty-five-hundred dollars there, but then it says other. What's the other for the twenty-thousand dollars? Kind of pull those together for me.
In my perfect world, there's always something that goes bad in a day at work, and I don't wanna say it's, it's money in a, in a savings account, but I can give you a recent changeover at, um, Ronald Sutton Gaffney Park. Fish, uh, Wildlife FWC, when we were doing construction documents, said, "You need to do a sand skank survey." Not just, you know, toilet smell, but sand skanks should do it. That was nineteen thousand dollars. So it's that rainy day thing that comes up that is what it is.
And I, I think I figured this out. It talks about splash pad chemical services. Um, that's not including the Cherry Lake splash pad, I'm assuming? Because it's, it's not in this twenty, uh, twenty-five to twenty-six, correct?
Correct. That is, that is the chlorine and, uh, acid chemicals needed to keep the Lake David splash pad, uh, operational, and, uh, the Cherry Lake one, uh, once designed, would be a, a future year add-on to that lineup.
Okay. Um, I think right now, of course, you know, once other people ask questions, something that could pop back up. I have one last thing that truly, oh, um, no, asked and answered. I have, this is crazy, but I'm gonna throw it out here, I don't have anyone else to throw it in. I want to keep Lake County beautiful, Board, Council, whatever. The, uh, Florida Department of Transportation offered a fifteen-thousand-dollar grant to keep Lake County beautiful, and it's for a variety of things for cleanup and so on. I'm gonna throw, since I'm talking, I'm gonna put it out here right now, but one of the things that we're talking about are these cleanup stations where you can actually put, it's like a, put it in the park, and it's got pickers and grabbers and trash bags on it. I've got the information, I don't know if I have to shoot it through Ginny to get it to you or what I have to do with it, but that grant money is good through the end of June, it might be something that we wanna take, take a look at if it's something that could be usable in our parks.
I'm more than happy to look at it afterwards.
I have it here, we can, I'll share it with you afterwards. Well, I'm done for now.
Okay, thank you. Here you go.
A lot of the questions I have have been asked and answered, so I'm gonna skip to the, the fun one anyway. Um, what programs would you like to see beyond what we've already talked about? Like, I've heard kickball, flag football, soccer, football, baseball, volleyball, uh, I think that baseball, softball, the summer camps, basketball, I know we have the outdoor series, what else would you like to see?
You want me to drown?
No. Assuming there were no obstacles, let's, let's throw that out there.
Well, I think the excitement that you, you've allowed, that the mayor and council have allowed to date is all new for this community that we, we keep adding to. So I mean, every, every year is new. So I, you know, I mean, you know, you mentioned baseball, softball, that's new for this community. So th- those are exciting things. I mean, everything we're doing, I think, is new to those that are here. So I, I don't know if there's something of the ball-
I was just wondering if you had anything else, like, in the back of your mind, come on, but if not, that's okay.
Well, our, our own, a rec center, our own rec center, so we don't have to play another space, but that comes with time, land, and dollar signs.
Of course.
Or patients.
And, um, and as far as running the baseball league, have you reached out and talked to Lake Leesburg? Do you know how much that would cost?
Have we talked to who? I'm sorry.
You said Leesburg runs their own, so have you reached out to them at this point, or not yet?
We have, no, talked to them probably about a month ago, um, and I'm not gonna toot my own horn here, but like I said, I, I manage a, a program, uh, currently, and that encompasses three youth baseball programs in Brooksville, Spring Hill, and Ridge Manor. Football, soccer, basketball, so all sports, thirty-five-hundred families. I have fourteen years monthly budgets of every league, so I can give you every line item, the revenues, depending on five-hundred-and-fifty children, hundred-and-fifty children, uniform costs, referee costs. So I mean, to answer your question specifically, just gave a little history, to run a program there, you're probably gonna be twenty-five to thirty-thousand dollars in expenses, but you can do that, that, that would be a wash in, in-
Registration fees and whatnot.
Fees, sponsor fees, because every uniform, you're gonna have a team sponsor, McDonald's, Wendy's, City of Groveland, you know, so, you know, I, I, I'm not one for banners on fences, but I think it's an eyesore. Yes, it's money, but nobody maintains the banners, especially when you're in leagues, and after hurricanes, they're flopping by one zip tie. So I, I hope that answers your question.
It does, thank you. Good.
Mr. Radzick?
Too many questions, but, I mean, I have a lot of questions.
Go, because you'll be answering the questions for us.
Sure, all right. I'll go back though. Mike, love your passion, and your new twenty-five thousand and all the other good stuff. What my question to you is, with eleven full-time equivalents right now, do we even have the human capital to maintain our current events? When I say current events, I mean the Fridays, I mean the cultural events, I mean the special events. So, how about I put my microphone right? Sorry.
Want me to repeat that? All right. I said, "Mike, I love your passion," and we were talking about the twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, but we have eleven full-time equivalents, and I'm asking you, do we have the human and the capital to maintain the current level of events, including the Fridays, the cultural events, and the special events? Do we actually have enough of people to do what we've got now?
The way I can respond to that, Mr. Radzick, is you have the perfect staff that's drinking the same Kool-Aid right now to make it happen. And let, let me just explain, um, you, you've, you've got seven folks, we work seven days a week, um, let me, let me clarify that. You have somebody on staff on Saturdays, you have somebody on staff on, on Sundays, I discussed that. Uh, it is a challenge with some of, some of the events, because, uh, some of those Saturday folks, Sunday folks, you know, are coming right back to work the next day. So, um, I don't know how much longer they're gonna, can hold on, you know, because it, it is a challenge. So some breathing room would be, um, pleasant. Mowing season is coming, and their butts aren't getting out of mows. And you got fifty-seven acres to mow, we all have a yard to mow, small, large, you know how often it gets mowed during that time of season, and we're, we're not far away.
One of the questions I've asked for the, um, last several years is the successfulness of our events, and is there any metric that tells me how successful Second Fridays are or other things? And I don't think we've gotten anything back, because a metric is not just, you know, revenues and expenses, it's participation, and I know that people follow Rob Nichols or, or Crawford or whatever, so I know that there's a following, but let me ask you, would it make sense to work with the RAC and let them come up with some sort of way to define, identify what the successful events are, so that we, during this budgeting process they're doing, can prioritize them? Should we not be able to do everything, or should we want to go ahead and, and cut back on things? Let's get what works the most and do it the best, is basically what I'm saying, but do it, do it through the RAC department, the RAC, uh, committee. Just a suggestion. Speaking of events, I look at it as we've got events, and then we have cultural events. Cultural events are usually tied to federal, be it, you know, Martin Luther King, or Juneteenth, or Veterans Day, or otherwise. Would it not make sense for us to concentrate on events and then find a community partner, be it Trilogy's, um, um, veterans or otherwise, to help with some of these cultural events? Um, you mentioned it a year or two ago, that some of these really do need some community involvement.
So if, if I might just jogtail on that real quick. Trilogy always does their big Memorial Day event.
Yep.
And it's very much ingrained in Trilogy. So they're not going to allow city outsiders to come in and partake, um, and it's usually well-attended. I know you've been there, Barbara, you've probably been there a little, or if you've been to it yet or not, but anyway. Um, so I just sent out the email today that they had asked me to, you know, remind everybody it's coming, I'll be out of the country, I won't be able to go, which, sorry about that. However, since we can't really open the gates to Trilogy to all comers, and we know that is a, the HRA will not allow that, is there a possibility, does the possibility exist that we could engage with Southlake TV to film that beautiful hour-long event and maybe stream it like we do our council meetings or something to that, uh, end? And then maybe it looks as though, yes, we have partnered with them, and it doesn't, we're not disenfranchising the city. It's just a thought, food for thought, I thought I'd toss that out there, and I didn't even, but since you brought it up, I figured it was a good time to toss that out there, too, now, and cross that off my list.
There you go. Um, looking at the budget, the very first thing that came to my mind is that we're gonna have a fifty-thousand-dollar excess in salaries. Based on what we've got right now, the next six months will be another three-ninety, and you've got about eight-thirty in there. So, uh, what are we gonna do with that extra fifty K? Budget amendment mid-year, Mike, I know, don't worry about it. Um, the maintenance of the right-of-way and the CRA, is that backcharged to the CRA?
Yeah, Mr., Mayor members of the council, that, Mr. Walker is not responsible for.
Oh, he's not doing, oh, sorry, I forgot about, see, you did such a great job, I keep on thinking it was you. Um, land up at JT Memorial for parking, I know we were approaching Arnold to use his, is it Arnold?
Laws. Laws, laws, the laws.
Oh, the laws, I'm sorry, the laws. And, um, he had some property next door that was basically really kind of vacant. Did he have any interest in selling it or leasing it or otherwise?
None.
So then what other land are we looking to possibly acquire up there?
Well, the, the purpose of that comment in the slide, it was, it was mentioned in the master plan, which was four years ago, so just a vision. I mean, just because today, in 2025, there's no interest to sell, if the city, you know, is that gonna stay a city park, what's that- is that gonna stay a city park, what's that city park gonna be? So, as April mentioned in one of her finance slides, there is funding requests for '25, '26 to master plan Jimmy Thomas Memorial Park, let's get buy-in from the community, what do they want in their neighborhood? Ball field will probably maybe be limited to one, don't know, extra pavilions for birthday parties and such, maybe a skate park relocating for Lake David, I mean, many options to communicate with the residents.
Okay. This is just a comment about the survey that I saw, and the citizens actually said they wanted a butterfly garden?
That is a request from me as a T-ball coach, because it's great hand-eye coordination.
How much will Wilson Island help towards the concurrency difference?
Mr. Heine?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have not calculated that number in regard to the concurrency, you know, and just speaking to that issue real quickly, one of the things the mayor and council previously did to help us get there is to require, through the use of CDDs, if a developer uses CDD, you amended your codes to require them to build and maintain these facilities to reduce ongoing maintenance on the active recreation.
Would be good to know what that could contribute. The pavilion that we just talked about, is there gonna be a sound system in there? In the Wilson, I'm sorry, Cherry Lake, is there gonna be, is there gonna be a sound system, or is that just gonna be a pavilion for tables, chairs?
It's just a pavilion area.
Okay. I don't think I saw the design on that.
But there's no sound system, but the one at Lake David is there. I was gonna say, every time, everybody has their towel or speakers and things like that.
Bring your own sound.
Right, okay, sorry, Mike, but thank you.
I have emailed mayor and council a picture of the pavilion.
Gaffden Park and the stormwater, will that help with the immediate surrounding subdivision stormwater needs? No? Our events that you looked at earlier, and these, of course, is all expenses, but again, it would've been nice to know how much the Fourth of July sponsorships are, how much the backpacks and sponsorships and otherwise. I know this is all expense-driven, but this probably would've had a better, would've looked a little bit better if we would've known how much is offset by current revenues. You talked about a database for cemetery plots, and I'm wondering why we don't do it in some sort of Microsoft thing, be it Excel, Access, Power BI? Why are we spending money for something that we've got something in-house? You're not looking at thousands of records.
We are looking at thousands of records.
Oh, really?
Yes.
How many, how many plots are out there?
You've got, I think you've got 1,200 in tournaments right now.
Okay, okay, all right. Well, again, instead of putting money towards a program, look to do it in something that we've got in-house, SQL-based or otherwise, save the money and put it towards something else. Last thing, South Lake Regional Park, I understand that it's part of 199 acres, and I understand that it's gonna, we're above concurrency with that, but I still have a concern about the project, especially since you made it on every single program, that the con is the cost. I'm just gonna do my remarks of that. Every one, baseball, everything at the bottom, the con, cost and staff, cost and staff, cost and staff, which is why I asked you earlier with 11 FTEs that we've got, how are we gonna be able to do anything else?
If I may, the purpose of that slide was if we were gonna do the programs in-house, running the programs, not so much...
And we're still gonna be a con if I do it out of house, because now I gotta pay, you know, a contractor or otherwise.
Not for programming, not if you partner with a volunteer.
Put it in writing, let me see a business plan. Just saying. And again, the double-edged sword is, is that 199 acres brings us to what we need to be in concurrency. So, you know, inside me, I've got this tug-of-war going on, it's gonna do what I need it to do, which is why I'd ask to know, how much time do we have in order to reach that concurrency? And then I ask, "Mike, well, wait a second, what is Wilson Lake Island gonna bring?" Which, again, tells me, maybe I don't need, you know, South Lake Regional Park and all that cost, or those annexed into the city. I'm just throwing those things out there, this is a cost seller, it's not a revenue-maker, we're not gonna break even, and we need to be, we need to be aware of that going in. I'm done, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
How about we fund the cultural events and find partners for the other events that go on? That's a rhetorical and sarcastic question. There's a reason why we have Hispanic colleges and universities. There's a reason why we have historical black colleges and universities, otherwise known as HBCUs. There's a reason why we have the NAACP. There's a reason for all of this. As I understand it, the population of the African-American community here in the city of Groveland is somewhere between, like, 25 and 28%. There's a reason why we have to have these cultural events. So, instead of looking for sponsors for the minority events, I say, "Take that money and use it for the cultural events, and then you go out and find money for the other events." How about that? Maybe that's something that you all can consider. When I first came to Groveland, about 12 years ago... Excuse me?
I said, "This is sad. This was not meant about anything other than to recognize that there were some events culturally..."
That were federally... Oh, come on. My, you're concerned.
And I didn't say a word. It's all about respect. It is all about respect.
Exactly.
Mike?
You know, Mike, your yelling, your yelling does not stir me.
I didn't have my speaker on.
Come on.
Whatever, you elevated your voice.
Nice, ma'am, let's talk to the staff.
May I continue? When I first came to Groveland, and I was on this side, I was one of those who said, "Groveland doesn't have anything, Groveland doesn't do anything." I was on that side. I knew very little about what Groveland was doing. They could've been doing a lot of things, but perhaps it was because I wasn't involved that I didn't know. I wanna say to you, Mr. Walker, and to Parks, city manager, that because of your insights, your creativity, your visions, this is what I have found the city of Groveland activities to be. Number one, because of the activities that you all have, you offer recreational opportunities for everyone that are inclusive. Number two, there's an economic impact, because when you have these events, you have small business vendors here, that impacts the city, you make people happy, there's food, there's entertainment, by the same token, you're having an impact on small businesses. Number three, you make social connections happen. I might not have otherwise known Michelle if I didn't come to an event. We connect, we have all kinds of connections. Networking is good, and for that, I thank you. And number four, you promote an active lifestyle. Kudos to the park for being inclusive. Kudos to the parks for recognizing cultural activities, even though you have not walked a mile in my shoes. Kudos for understanding the relevancy and connectivity, be it the Chinese New Year, be it the Caribbean Festival, be it Juneteenth. Kudos for being inclusive. And I do have one more question, who is the partner for the book bags? You said you had a partner, I believe you said you had a partner?
Fine, feed and restore.
Stephen, kudos to you. Thank you so much, I didn't have as much, as many questions as I had comments and concerns. Mr. Walker, I can't walk a mile in your shoes, April's shoes, or Pam's shoes. But guess what? By the same token, you can't walk a mile in my shoes for any other ethnic representatives that we have here in the city. I applaud you for being inclusive of the city. And with that, I am done.
Thank you. There we go. The debt, let me find, the debt service went from 85 in 2023 to 162.5 was zero in 2024. What, can you kind of give me a background on that, decrease in debt service attributed to one-time charge? What was that for?
So, the decrease that you see there is the 162. I would have to do a little bit of research, and I apologize, I should've done that before I came here, knowing I didn't, I am not familiar with what the debt service was in FY23 that is listed there. The 162.5 is for the loan that the city will take for South Lake Regional Park.
Is that the interest rate, or is that the cost to us?
That's the cost of issuance, it's the cost of issuance.
And is that reimbursed at some time from Lake County, that cost?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we were able to renegotiate the terms with Lake County, where they covered not only the capital, but also the issuance costs and the interest. A lot of it will be dependent upon the bids, you know, as Mr. Walker stated, the park isn't an if, it's a when, it's on the street. And I'm really optimistic that we'll get a group of local contractors who wanna support the community on this effort, so, until we get the bids number in, I can't give you any exact...
Understood. I'm curious about the operating expenses, our capital outlay, 19 million was budgeted, and we only used 472. What's the lag on that?
So, what is not showing in there is also what is encumbrances, what is encumbered. So, I think that sometimes that's an important side to look at as well, which means, what do we have open POs on? So, there is work that is being done on all of those projects, right? But it's not necessarily, hasn't been submitted for payment yet. That is what has been submitted for payment on Cherry Lake, or Robert Sefton Gaffney, or South Lake Regional Park.
Okay, I get it. So, they also have a collateral reserve, that you have all that money somewhere, and you haven't got regular checks on it yet?
Correct, so it's sitting in the capital line items of those projects.
Gotcha, yeah, and, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I could follow that up, because it's not just this department, that's a key point, that I know sometimes people aren't familiar, government can't start, the city cannot start a project until it has full funding. So, that's South Lake Regional Park.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just one thing, Mr. Heine, you know, we're looking at year-to-date activity. You didn't say here that it was year-to-date payments or cost to date. So, when you say year-to-date activity, why not lump into there the encumbrance? Because it is an activity on a year-to-date basis. That way, we're not gonna be asking the same questions all the time, "Why do I have such a big, you know, leftovers?" So, if you're gonna use that catch-all of year-to-date activity, I put a footnote at the bottom, includes encumbrances or whatever.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we'll probably include a footnote, but the opposite way, because otherwise, it would invite the question, "Well, how can you have spent so much if you haven't even gone out to bid yet?"
Thank you. On the next, I think I'm still on the $5,000 for the Second Friday, would that be the next slide? I don't have the, we budgeted about $5,000, we said for Second Friday, and I saw on our biweekly, we kind of averaged 450 in expense and revenue, $5,000 in expenses, 450 in revenue.
Depends on the event, yes.
Yeah, I mean, and that's another question, I see some are 3,000, some are more, but at what point do we say, you know, I guess I would ask, is that gonna get closer, is that gap gonna narrow? For, I mean, 90%, we're investing, 10%, the people are investing, right, at 450. Do we have a plan on how to get that closer, that variance closer?
I am open to mayor and city council giving staff direction, that if you wanna increase fees, because right now, your vendor fees are a whopping $10 per fee, so if vendor fees need to increase, we can do that, we can close that gap, and that's gonna be the way to close the gap.
I don't matter about the rest, but my answer to that is, you should be proposing every year, it's going up, like, 25 now, and then, as we get more and more people, because we need to, you can't hit them all at once, but I think you need to look at that, and I don't know what the process of that is when we get to the budget, but I would recommend that you come back to us with some kind of scale, because no business can continue year after year, subsidizing 90% of something. You know, I know there's an economic impact, but I don't think it's 10 to 1 on the economic impact.
And may I ask, Mike, I never knew what the fees were for the vendors, what is an average fee, or, that's a very nominal fee, obviously, God bless us, but is it 25, is it 40, 45? What's kind of the average fee that...
We hear from our vendors that participate in vendor space here in the city of Groveland that are, through our special event applications, those vendors, some vendor fees are $250 a space.
So, Mayor, you said a nice jump up to 25, I think we could...
Well, as a member of those, I mean, let me just say this, it all depends on how many people you have in front of you.
Oh, true.
And so, if we average 300, and they're averaging 3,000, that's a big difference. Until we can get our attendance up to a place that it is, I mean, a vendor will come in as long as they're making money, they give us that $10, that was more, remember that, that was a placeholder, so they'd come. they'd come, right? They wouldn't cancel out. They had ten dollars. But I think we can start that, again, it's a heck of a lot bigger than that, especially starting with ten dollars. But we can start that.
And Steve, in your event, one of your event coordinators, as mentioned, that, you know, we could increase, and definitely the food trucks. The food vendors are paying to send their space for their, you know, because they are, you know, I don't want to say a high-ticket item, but they're charging more. The people come with good food. So, you know, we will, we will bring something back and implement something for.
Do we have time then? Because I know you sit in here, we're, we don't do the block parties, was it in July and August? Would then not give time to say, starting with the next block party, which would then be September, our new fee schedule would be? Would that be kind of the way we could deliver that and serve that up?
Or October one, yep.
That's when the attendance comes back. I mean, the fall, we get a bigger attendance, the summer's going to be way down.
So Mayor, with the, with my comment before about the rack and defining and identifying, and we prioritize, and you got July 4th, then I think that your food truck permits to be higher during July 4th, during some of the other big events.
Yeah, I agree, and I think I should go back to him, but I've had food truck events, not in this state, but outside. I took a percent of the gross based on their sales, but, you know, and that is always a good partnership, and I get a lot of good people, or had a lot of good people, because I've taken the risk, and they are too. But it gives us a reason to promote them as well. But I just take that back and kind of figure it out.
I could just add, our July 4th and Father's Day events, vendor fees are twenty-five dollars. So we do increase when we know we're going to add the volume.
Okay, National, the Nathaniel Community Gymnasium. We make, how much? We make thirteen grand revenue, based on this slide right here. But our expenses aren't what's on here. We have another eighty-five thousand dollars in lease, and we have another twenty thousand dollars in electric and power, right? And so we got a hundred and five thousand dollars tied up before we even get into this. And if you, if you divide that up by the number of team members, I could almost pay them not to come, right? I mean, there's not enough people to justify that. Are you going to close the gap on that? That's a big ticket item when you're talking about a hundred and twenty-five grand in expenses a year.
Probably not.
Some things are an investment in our future, in our kids, in our community, and I think that is one of them. Like youth recreation leagues.
We remember that, we need to get something for somewhere else. I mean, we've got to, we can't, we can't keep doing a hundred grand in the hole for how many people versus a hundred grand to put in, you're upgrading your park around the corner. I mean, what is that? And what, what does it cost to build a gymnasium?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I certainly appreciate the discussion, and those are the types of directions or consensus we'll need. Because when the original agreement with the gymnasium was put into place, it was more based on the fact that the community wanted to provide this type of program and educational opportunities to the community, could not afford to build its own gymnasium. Instead of looking at the cost per participant, the council asked us to look at the cost per hour of usage, which is why Mike showed the data that he showed, because it comes down to about a hundred and seventy.
Three hundred and sixty-eight dollars an hour.
No, it's annualized. And we can show you the statistics, but it's lower, and it was certainly less than we could build a gymnasium for.
Well, so let's just circle back. As a business person, you say, I've got this fixed expense, right? And how can I maximize the value of that? Is there more than basketball that we could do if we're leasing that year-round? Is there more that can happen in that building to generate revenue than this basketball during basketball season and volleyball season?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, absolutely. But again, staff wasn't given the directive to drive revenue. It was to provide programming, and there's more programming than just the basketball for youth and adults.
So that's a lot of programs that we need to come up with.
And it is, and not to be contradictory, but what comes with that too, more programming, is once again, the humans to put the programs on.
We got a hundred grand going out the door. You know, if we could get some of that back, maybe we could pay for somebody, because you're still going to have the hundred grand going out the door. Understood? That's a fixed expense. So we can figure it out. But if you had, if you were in an office building, a hundred and ten grand a year, you would figure some way to maximize getting revenue back as much as you can on that hundred and ten thousand dollars. That's a big ticket item in this city, you know? With a thirty-one million dollar budget, that's a, that's a nice percentage for how many people are we actually impacting there? The, so we've got October 1st, where we get the revenue package for the Greenwood Cemetery. Are we right now on hold on selling plots? Or we said we have rules and regs. I think it said on the October 1st, we would have the new guidelines up. So are we selling that now, or are we on hold for selling plots over there?
We are set, we are currently selling plots. But we are selling at the current prices that the church had in place. So we are taking baby steps. City attorney and myself will be sitting down to go over draft language and fees that have been put together. You had, we had a consultant put together a report. We've reviewed that, pulled numbers out of there, added to what we think will work after, just from the experience of your staff. So the goal is to have something no later than October 1st, could even be sooner.
Okay. The lake parks, the new parks, Lake David and Cherry Lake Park. What capacity are, I don't know, are we at twenty percent capacity a year and fifty percent at Cherry? What's our capacity right now that we're using up for Cherry Lake and Lake David Park?
Just for normal use, daily users, won't be fifty percent.
Okay. So I asked that question because on the strategic plan, the parks side was to have a lot of small parks. I gather, or our research showed that we needed gathering places. There's a lot of different ethnic backgrounds that want to have family, big fat family gathering places. It was not always having a recreational park. And so as, I don't know what the trigger is to expand a park that's still in fifty percent capacity versus doing some things that are more accessible within walking distance to other communities. So I really like to understand what that phase is. It's no different than our, than our schools, right? We said we don't want eighty-acre schools anymore. We want smaller community schools. It's that same mindset. So I know we got a hundred and ninety acres over there, God bless that, but in the strategic plan, it was to have a lot of smaller parks around. So please be aware of that. The greatest success I see in return is on your, on your trunk-or-treat party on your financials. Is there anything else we could do along those lines? Get kids involved and bring the parents and everything? That was a great, that was a great event, and I never heard one person say anything here about it. I didn't see one person leaving without a smile on their face. And I don't know if there's other, you know, maybe, I don't know what it is out there, but that is a model that if we could duplicate that model, it'd be unbelievable, because we had community participation and had a lot of attendance. So congratulations on that.
Our tree, Easter, Christmas are very successful.
On the, on the rentals for all of our properties, I can't find, what's the, what's the total revenue for the rents of here in Lake David, we rent property, you talked about that? What's the total revenue of our rentals? And do we charge a cleaning fee and all that? I'd just like to kind of understand if it's, what that is.
I do not have that number off the top of my head, Mayor, but I'd like to get that and get that back to council to give you the three hundred and fifty-four.
That would be great, because we have expenses that are linked to that. That would be great to put up against each other. Do we charge or do we offer event insurance? Do people have to get event insurance when they come here?
They do, but it's not from us.
It's not from you? It's just, okay. All right. Any forethought on, I know there was a hot topic with the strategic plan committee on kayak rentals, and I know there's bike rentals that somebody's doing up off of the, you know, off of, I don't know, with Eagle Point in that area. Is there any further discussion on creating revenue?
Internally with staff, and I think with, you know, Mr. Andrew Landis and some of the things he's doing, because I'm not convinced that Lake David Park would be that venue. You might be, we might be getting phone calls from the fishermen because of everybody kayaking around them when they're fishing.
Okay, that's interesting. If you, you talked a lot about models, you talked a lot about what we do as far as maintenance. Do we pay, do we have a fuel station where we pay off-road for our gas and our diesel? So we don't have to pay that extra twenty-two cents per gallon?
So.
No, I was going to say, you know, I'd love finance or city manager answer, because I know the city is implementing its own fuel source station, so the fire department is managing that. So city will be transitioning to its own fuel.
They're going to have gas out there? I know they want on diesel out there.
They're going to have, the tank that we have in place, right, or that is in there that is getting ready to be operational, is split between fuel, regular fuel and diesel. And so it is right on the cusp of being ready for use at the public safety building.
Very cool. And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, kudos to the finance staff. They've started preparing specialized forms that go to the state that give us the tax exemption on fuel purchase.
Very nice. Is there anything I didn't ask you that I should? No? Yes? No? I'm sorry I didn't call you before, but I just got this this afternoon, so I didn't have a time to call and ask the questions beforehand. All right, any further questions? Go back to me.
Why do I want to talk into that thing? I have two, two small questions. I know the splash pad comes next year for Cherry Lake Park. Is that going to be the same size as the one at Lake David, or is it going to be a larger splash pad, because it's a larger park?
Actually, the plan is to design that portion next year. That's the request, and this year's budget is 2026. We will design, do the conceptual plan, the construction documents, with hopes of having funding in 2027 for the construction. So to go through that process, we would have community meetings. Hey, what do you want? What do you want it to look like? What can the city afford? And go that route.
Okay, thank you for that. And last, I know you were talking about travel ball and talking about how it disenfranchises pretty much the local residents that want to come in and use the parks or, you know, play baseball. Is there any way that you see that the two of them can exist together, or it's, it kind of starts becoming like one or none? Because we don't want to, you know, we don't want to minimize, you know, minimize our participation or disenfranchise folks that live in the city, and you've got people coming in from Ohio or wherever they come from to play travel ball. Is there any way they can coexist peacefully?
Great question. Even though I'm an old fifty-eight-year-old, turning gray person, managing the league that I manage, I thought my vision would work well with spring ball, with March, April, May, June. The spring season is the time that a community true youth recreational league should operate. I tried to implement and have the fall season, when other sports are going on for children, soccer, basketball, football, where some of those spring baseball players might want to play the other sports for that twenty percent of the talented ones for the fall season, fall ball, to be the travel season. So that worked well at times, but being a volunteer, sometimes you have to have your thumb on the adults all the time to make sure the concept stays in place. If not, it just always reverts back. So, yes, there's a way, to answer your question, but I think city involvement, you know, needs to be there. And maybe, maybe, and I'll just share, once again, you're getting on my hot topic, we all have them. You know, I talked with the Groveland Baseball League, I said, maybe you need to change your bylaws and recover the Groveland Youth Sports League, and you manage more than just baseball. Maybe that's person on that board, a person on that board sits on the rack. Maybe a person in the Groveland Parks Department of Groveland sits on their board, so that dialogue and communication stays in place, and we rebirth and we grow from there. But I think that would work well if we're hand in hand. We work together, and it could work.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
And I think it was.
Have you, Jen, have you got a question? I can do ask, Mr. Mayor.
I just, I just have another kind of comment, and, because it's come up a little bit about profit and breaking even, and government is not business. They're not the same. And when we look at departments that serve people and serve our community, I really believe that Parks and Rec is one that serves our community. So it kind of comes down to what services do our citizens want? And those are the things we really need to focus on. And I'd also like to kind of edge in there that bored kids, and especially teens, causes your crime rate to go up significantly. That's all.
I meant to make this comment, comment earlier when you talked about the volunteer organizations. Those things that you can't control, you do. Those you can't, you work around. I think that it is a good idea for the city to control as much of this effort as they can. And anything above and beyond that, work around. But for now, volunteer organizations, you cited the reasons why sometimes some of the disadvantages. As I look around and I see some things that perhaps we've had partnership involvement within, with, and et cetera, I say, take control as much as you can. Thank you.
Okay, Mike, did you have anything else? All right, saying nothing else. Do you have any more questions for us? Do you have a motion to adjourn? Thank you.